This study session of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, August 8th, 2023, in Room 137 of the Edison Building. The Board acknowledges this site and all RPS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota People, and we honor the Dakota Nations and the sacred land of all Indigenous peoples. We are not live streaming tonight's meeting, but it is being recorded and will be posted on our YouTube channel at youtube.com/ISD535 tomorrow. The agenda and documents for this meeting are available online at rochesterschools.org/simli, S-I-M-B-L-I. Present at this meeting are School Board members, Superintendent Kent Pecow, a non-voting ex officio member, and Assistant School Board Clerk Ms. Laurie Sam. Ms. Sam, would you please call the roll?
Director Barlow?
Here.
Director Cook?
Here.
Treasurer Garcia?
Here.
Director McLaughlin?
Here.
Director Marvin?
Here.
Chair Nathan?
Here.
Vice Chair Workman?
Here.
At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the Fledgling of the meetings. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 2.1, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The agenda has been approved. Well, tonight, our prep-for-action item is our School Board self-evaluation of the goals for 2023-24. This is a prep-for-action item, and we're planning to take action, if we have, since I've been drafting the goals this evening, at the August 15th meeting. But in order to inform the development of our goals, we're first going to discuss the results from our School Board self-evaluation. The Rochester School Board used the Minnesota School Board Association Framework for Governance Survey as the tool for our self-evaluation, and the results are available on Simli in this agenda item. The School Board self-evaluation results reflect the collective responses of the Board and the Superintendent. Try that again. These results build a profile of the Board's work in five standards of Board practice proven to support student achievement. Those standards are conduct and ethics, vision, structure, accountability, advocacy, and communication. Each Board member answered 71 questions with a rating of either always, most of the time, some of the time, never, or don't know. And the data is presented in a summary of results under each of the five standards and are presented in terms of the percentage of questions that were answered in each category under each of the ratings. So if you're looking at the Framework for Governance aggregate data, color-coded are stacked bar charts. Under Standard 1, Conduct and Ethics, provide responsible school district guidance. Forty-five percent of the answers were always, forty-seven were most of the time, and eight were some of the time. There were no, never, or don't know. Under Standard 2, Vision, set and communicate high expectations for student learning with clear goals and plans for meeting those. Forty-nine percent were always, forty-eight most of the time, and four some of the time. No, never, or don't know. Standard 3, Structure, create conditions district-wide for student and staff success. Fifty percent always, twenty-four most of the time, nineteen some of the time, zero never, and seven percent don't know. Standard 4, Accountability, hold school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations, forty-five percent always, forty-three percent most of the time, thirteen percent some of the time, and no, never, or don't know. And Standard 5, Advocacy and Communication, engage local community and represent the values and expectations they hold for their schools. Thirty percent always, fifty-nine percent most of the time, ten percent some of the time, and no, never, or don't know. So MSBA gives us some guidance to sort of guide our conversation about these results. And the kickoff question is, what do Board members and the Superintendent see in these results? What stands out to you? And you could also consider how this year's data looks relative to previous years. Does anybody like to share their observations? All right, I'm going to start. Well, for the first time in the five times that we've taken this survey, although not all the same Board members, no School Board member or Superintendent answered never in any copy items. So there's no red, if you will, in the aggregate data, which I think is progress because these are based on our standards for School Board leadership that we, Director Cook was just sharing. Participated in an MSBA School Board training this week, and those are central to all of the MSBA trainings. So it's good to know that as a Board, we feel that we are at least most of the times or some of the time are always completing the work under those standards. Anything else in these summary results that stand out?
Superintendent?
Somebody who's been here for only some of these years, I'll just say, having spent a lot of time looking at self-report evaluation data, this is striking improvement over a five-year period when you look at almost every category, and it's not just the absence of the red. It's really impressive trend data in a lot of, on the whole. The other thing, just to nerd out about the methodology, one of the problems with using frequency as your measure is that actually objectively, some of the time is more appropriate for some of these actions because you don't, for instance, hold the school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations like all of the time. That's something we do or you do periodically. So I understand why they rate it with frequency. Another way to do it is like degree of agreement. I strongly agree that Rochester School Board does an excellent job holding the school district accountable for meeting student learning expectations, and then you can go from strongly agree to strongly disagree, which doesn't get caught up in some people who are very, very, myself often included, specific in reading the words and responding. You might think, well, actually, we don't do that all the time. Someone put some of the time, which seems less positive than all of the time, but you're actually just saying, well, that's not something we do every day. So anyway, it's just one of the pitfalls of using frequency as a rating scale, but I think in the big picture, it's a very positive evaluation.
Director McLaughlin?
Looking at the data and then kind of reflecting back to the last year of Board meetings, it struck me that a lot of the Board meeting discussions are structured around these five standards, and I think that this represents us doing that important work and making decisions based on these standards and not based on other things that are not as relevant than these standards to our work.
Director, oh, Director Workman?
So just kind of giving a little different perspective on what Kent just said. I read that always as meaning always within the context of when we do it or we should be doing it rather than, because we can't do all of this every day or every meeting anyway, but you know, it's a question of, well, do we talk about students always, but that might not be specific to every single meeting as opposed to, we never talk about students, we never talk about student growth, we never talk about fill-in-the-blank having to do with students. So that's more the way that I looked at it rather than necessarily frequency, but I'm still, I wasn't happy with these questions back in, what was the first year, 2017, and I'm not totally happy with them now because I think some of them where maybe there's an expectation, should it be always? It's kind of like, well, we don't do that, and I don't think we should be doing that at all, ever. So there's that piece.
Great. Director Barlow?
So three things. One, I'll begin with, piggyback off of Director Workman's comment. Certainly, the standards themselves are self-generated, if you will, but are the statewide standards, if you will, that exist, and I think perhaps if we find agreement as to maybe how we can wordsmith these or allow them to be more reflective of the actual Board work we're engaged in, I think the Board, MSBA, might be open to considering that. So I think we should capture those concerns as we go through this process. That might be of some value. Secondly, yeah, we weren't immune from the COVID lag, if you will, those three, four-hour meetings, and you know, they were difficult times, and so as we maybe self-evaluated, I think that was a potentially influencing factor, but not to overlook the significant importance of the leadership that both you currently are providing and Dr. Marvin as well. You guys have been instrumental, I believe, in allowing us to grow to this point. And so keep up the good work. You're heading, the ship is headed in the right direction, and, but it's, I'm excited to be a part of the Board, this being my eighth year or so. I've seen the growth, and in many ways, we can out-benefit from the work, but work's not finished.
Director Cook?
So I, as I was reviewing these results and kind of reacting to them, I felt like the 23 results accurately reflected my view of this Board's work. I was surprised at the degree of, I guess, improvement over the last five-year period. But I really think, Chair Nathan, that you focused on exactly the right thing for my perspective on what to take away from here, that we have, not what I do is the table stakes of Board work. We have checked all of these boxes. We are addressing and attentive to all of these categories because none of them are never. But in my view, I have very high expectations for this Board. I'm very ambitious for this district, and I think just because we always do something is not the same as feeling like there's no room for improvement. And I'm excited to continue to work hard to play the part that I can for this Board to be high-performing and providing strategic direction and leadership for the district. But I do think it's a very good sign that we have, that we have not had any never indications. So that's it.
Director McLaughlin?
Clearly, Standards 2, 3, and 4 are all about student achievement and supporting students and staff, and they're sort of teased apart in terms of different aspects of that. But it was interesting to me that Standard 3 was the lowest-scoring one we had in terms of always or most of the time. And that's sort of what I'm looking for, is what percentage do we have of those two categories together? It was still 74%, but I'm just wondering if that's something, I mean, one of the goals or part of, part of that, I think, should be one of our goals going forward. And I just read that then, you're not supposed to do any interpretation, which I just did.
Right. We're going to move on, we're going to move on to that one.
We're all in the upper 80s and 90 percentage, so I think that's pretty darn good.
Director Workman?
The other thing I'd like to call to your attention, if you haven't seen it, noticed it already, that there's a gap between 2017 and 2020, and those were some challenging times on the Board where even in 2017, we did not have everybody who took the survey. And I remember at the time that Gail Gilman reluctantly said, okay, I'll come down and do it anyway, but we didn't have input from everyone. And then a couple of years after that, it was like, once again, it was more like pulling teeth, like people were just not interested in doing the self-evaluation and moving forward. So one of the big differences I see is then from 2020 until now is that this Board, which is some of the same members and some different ones, has been much more focused on the idea that in order for us to be a high-performing school district, we really have to be a high-performing School Board with a high-performing Superintendent. And I'm really encouraged by the response that I see compared to some of these earlier years. So thank you, all of you, for your dedication and your seriousness with this job and to Kent and Kathy and Jean for their leadership, since you're the most recent ones. Let's see, John, you've been chair too, so.
Can I ask you follow-up clarification on that? Was the survey not done then between those years, or it's just not?
Correct. That's correct. It was kind of like, okay, we need to do this, eh, and we didn't have protocols set. I mean, there were so many parts of our structure that had to evolve over those several years. And the last couple of years, I think there's just been a huge push to have much more structure within our School Board, how we do things, in terms of our calendar for meetings and our agendas and our policies and all of that. And I won't embarrass Kathy Nathan by mentioning her efforts in this, but I think she's been a real, from my perspective, she's been a real leader in helping us to go in that direction.
And just going to build on that clarification and what Director Barlow said, those Board members who have been here for a while when I came on the Board brought their concerns about what needed to improve to day one when we started on the Board. So the fact that the three of you had been pushing for that change even before the rest of us got on the Board, I think, really helped us to launch forward together. You know, we have been in agreement, I think, from the very beginning about bringing these structures. Obviously, it's not one person's job. It was all of us kind of getting together and moving in this direction together. So I really appreciate the self-evaluation you all have done, who have been on the Board for a while, knowing what needed to change, and then for all of us who have come on since then to, you know, all move together in the same direction.
Director Garcia?
Yeah, my comment isn't necessarily different from that of my colleagues. I just, when I was looking at it, I reflected on like 2021 would have been the first time that I had participated in a self-evaluation, and just to be able to see the growth in some of these categories, or really all of the categories, it reflects how I feel being on the Board, because I felt like my first year, we were all on fire, and now there's a little bit of like stability, and we're able to move forward with a couple of key players, I think, that help to keep this big O engine running the way that it does, a lot more smoothly than when I first started. I would still, even though we're technically in total for Standard 5, doing pretty well, I think I would like to see that green a little bit thicker because that was one of the reasons that I joined the Board in the first place. So I'm glad that there's a lot of movement there, and I think that we still have room for improvement in some of those spaces.
That is a great way to transition to doing a little bit more of the direction that Director Marvin was taking us in, in terms of what are we seeing in these results of where we're doing good work and definitely signaling a focus for improvement because those are the things that might guide us to our goals. Board members, we passed out, just so that you would have reference, the 71 questions that you answered. They're not your answers, they're the 71 questions. And Director Barlow, that might be a good opportunity or way, if there is anything, as we're going through some of these, a question that you felt didn't really reflect accurately or well how we might describe our work. Or if there's any of the questions that really stood out to you that might be driving some of these, some of the times. For example, as Director Marvin brought up in Standard 3, or the some of the times in Standard 4 with accountability, or that could help us drive up the most of the time or always in Standard 5. And we had one don't know, we had, the only standard where there was a don't know was under structure, and I would be curious if anyone did complete any of those questions in that section as don't know. That also might be good to know because is that something information we can provide? Is that something Superintendent can provide? So anybody have any thoughts, kind of digging into that next level? Director Marvin, you had said something about Standard 3. Did you have any thoughts about that?
I do. Well, first of all, clearly, we, I'm assuming our goal is to set three goals.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And because we do that doesn't mean that we don't pay attention to everything else we're doing. So it's just these three that may be measurable, may be the priority going forward. For that one in particular, Conditions District-Wide Per Student and Staff Success. The one above that is High Expectations for Student Learning. The one below that is Holding the District Accountable for Meeting Student Learning Expectations. It's the one place I think that staff is mentioned, and so I don't know if this score is slightly lower because people feel the conditions don't exist for student success or for staff success. It's the one place that staff is addressed. And as far as I'm concerned, we can never do a good enough job for either of those. We have to continue to look at what we're doing, how we're doing, so the conditions do exist, so that every child can be successful and so that every staff member is a quality person who wants to stay and wants to do the work. But I would be kind of interested this year in setting a goal for how we do a better job of supporting, recruiting, supporting, and maintaining staff. And maybe I skipped a step there. We were supposed to talk about something else first. I was listening.
No, we're good. Because I know at some point, I just have to let the horses out of the barn with this group, so thanks for your.
You have officially been free. You're out of the barn, Jean. It's official.
Free-range thoughts.
Free-range thoughts.
How far can we take this metaphor? You guys are impressive.
Just wait till we start in with the alliteration.
Oh, I got alliteration.
So you said recruiting, supporting, and retaining?
Retaining is probably recruiting, retaining, in any order.
Before we get into that too much, I'm wondering, I think our goals need to be really at least marginally, more than marginally aligned with the Superintendent's goals and the district goals, because if we're off doing our own thing, then that's not going to be particularly helpful to anybody and could end up being extremely frustrating. So I don't know how much you want to delve into the goals that the Superintendent has set in terms of how our ideas might fit into that. Don't mean to throw monkey wrench into everything yet, but.
Why don't we hold that thought until we get to some goal fleshing out at the end? Because I think that'll be more of a cross-reference to the ideas we have as opposed to something that might drive that.
So my horse's head is poking out of the barn, but I'll pull it back in, at least for that piece.
Yep.
So just to make sure I'm tracking properly, you're asking us to reflect about the current standards and to perhaps systematically, I don't know if you wanted to, Standard 1, Standard 2?
I don't know that we have to do it systematically. I'm just wondering if, as you maybe review the questions, if there's anything, when you were filling out the survey, that you thought, I feel very strongly about this some-of-the-time piece because, or I had a hard time answering that question because I didn't think it was reflective. Director Workman?
So, you know, so many of these were have policies, that, and then there's a statement afterwards. So have, number 35, have policies for evaluating staff based on student success. And I'm not sure if that's a direction that we are going in right now, or if we want to go in that direction, or how much emphasis a Superintendent might place on that, but be that as it may, I don't know if there is a specific policy that we have for evaluating staff. Off the top of my head, I couldn't think of one. That doesn't mean it's not there or buried somewhere else, but.
And I would kind of add to that. I read some of these, and it occurred to me, should I be cross-referencing the entire policy manual with each question?
Exactly.
And I didn't.
And I didn't necessarily construe this as suggesting that we had policies, but that the district itself had, and I'm sure within the Department of HR, they have these various things that this is referencing.
They're not policy with a big P, but policy with a little p.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that needs to, we need to say something to MSBA about that because they have, I think, maybe practices or protocols, procedures that they use, but whatever they do with that still has to align with our policy. But is it necessary, I mean, have policies for evaluating staff based on student success? I see that, a lot of that is a management issue in terms of, is that helpful to students being successful or not? And then there's the whole, the whole thing with, you know, teacher evaluation, which the Board does not engage itself in, which I'm very happy about.
Sorry, yeah, I was, I was, I don't want to spend the whole night discussing our various interpretations of these questions, but in that one in particular, I thought the staff was referencing the Board's employee of one, and I immediately thought of our Superintendent's goal to address literacy in grade three by three and a half percent next year, and I thought that pretty tied to student success. But maybe just to go a slightly different direction, the, another area of concern that might lend itself to a goal, and I'm having trouble deciding on the fly what that might be while considering the appropriate balance between governance and the Superintendent's role, but question 36 is one that jumped out at me because I think it's an area of priority rightly for the district to ensure that our teachers are being well-proved with, provided with the type of professional development opportunities that will be so essential to the district's literacy goals and implementation in MTSS. So I think there are policies that lend themselves to ensuring that staff are provided with professional development opportunities, but it might be an area we could consider for a goal. I just, that's as far as my thought goes right now.
Super brief, we will be bringing you, as we bring, I'm now calling that building block that says recruitment and retention, human capital, because I think it's bigger than just recruitment and retention, and that is a part of the strategic plan that goes into the design phase this year. That evaluation's a piece of that, and so we will be bringing you and asking for your guidance strategically on our approach to evaluation. We do have some important change work to do in thinking about evaluation. We agreed when we launched the strategic plan that we don't want to start there. You want to start with evaluating people. You want to start with a vision and capacity building and support before you're talking about how you're going to evaluate somebody. And so you have seen the framework that our, we've adopted for building principals, which is from University of Washington and Basin. Now that we have clarity on that and we have buy-in from our principals, we are going to start the work of using that for evaluation, but that's following that process. We need to do some work around teachers. Teacher evaluation is still using the class instrument. I am this, literally this week, rolling out the first evaluation framework for central office administrators in beta form, which I know hasn't existed for at least 10 years, and so we're getting feedback on that. So the evaluation discussion is very much coming at the strategy level, and I'll be eager for that discussion as part of that human capital conversation in the year ahead. I know that's not our main focus now, but I wanted to let you know that's on the to-do list for sure as part of our people strategy.
Well, and I think it's good that our self-evaluation is recognizing that gap in either what our agenda item has been, you know, we've had conversations, and I know it's on the agenda, to hear about the staff development plan.
Yeah, that's another example. That's part of the human capital.
Right. So there is a policy on staff development plan, and there are pretty structured approaches that the policy includes, the flow of how that plan is supposed to work through the district. And I think as we talked about it the last time in Policy Committee when we were reviewing that policy, those pieces have come into play in some part because of the way the strategic plan is structured with the discs and the skips. So I have this also as an area of the. also as an area of the some of the time, recognizing that a lot of the pieces have not come to the table yet, but are going to be coming. So I'm glad we're seeing some dovetailing between what we're seeing in our governance work and what you're already planning for bringing to the board through the management work. So...
Kathy, I have something a little bit to add to that.
Yep.
And I think maybe the thing that trips perhaps some of us up is the best practices. Being outside the education area in my regular world is that best practices. Are we being explicit in, all of us being on the same page and understanding that X is best practice, we're doing that?
Okay. So having the board understand?
Yes.
Okay.
Slash other people.
Correct.
Yes.
I had similar thoughts in my mind about question 44, that I am extremely hopeful. The expectation is that all classrooms will implement effective instructional practices. But when I read it, I wasn't 100% certain that I have heard that that's been communicated directly and expressly to our classroom teachers.
From the board.
From the board.
From the board and or superintendent or both. I mean, I think that's happening. My feeling is, and some information is that's happening, but is that something that the board needs to be more vocal about in support of what you and the building principals are trying to do? That, you know, because when we say, if we say, we have an expectation that all classrooms will implement effective instructional practices, I think that demonstrates that we are aligned, if nothing else.
Yeah. I think broadly, everything in the strategic plan is about evidence-based practice or instructional practice. If you are a teacher or a social worker or mental health practitioner, being told to do effective or evidence-based is not particularly actionable. The question is, which practices are you asking you to learn? So today we spent, it was actually great, we had a full day at Dakota on deeper learning with very diverse teams from every school and program in the district. That is a practice, set of practices that is quite clearly getting out. Science of reading is a set of practices that is quite clearly getting out. We need to do that across areas. Predating my coming to Rochester, there was a framework that's called the class framework. It's an acronym. It's from Dr. Bob Pianta's research at University of Virginia. He is a superb scholar. It's a very research-based framework for good teaching. It is very complex, very heavy lifting, and it ought to be accompanied by intensive professional development, so that when someone's coming in and evaluating you on the class framework, you have been introduced to these practices, you've had a chance. We're not doing any of that right now, and we're also not doing much to build the capacity of the principals who are using the framework to evaluate. Because it's like, it's a solid framework, I have kind of not stopped it. But over the next couple of years, we either need to invest more deeply in it, which Rochester did at one point. People have been here for a long time and said, there was a time when people were getting intensive professional development on class, or we need to pivot for that. So I think this is a priority for the year ahead. I think broadly stated, this board has said we expect you to use effective practice, but I think we clearly want to go beyond that. To some extent, this is an artifact of the day when for a school board to say anything about instructional practice was innovative. Like, you know, you guys just watch the money and the policy and you don't actually talk about. And so I think we're past that here, and we want to be giving guidance and support around which practices.
And I think my reason for raising that question is not just that, but that too, but also completing the feedback loop so that we know how it's being done and that it's being done.
Yep.
Director Garcia?
And to build on to that too, I would say like clarifying the who we're expecting to have this development and implement these instructional practices, because I think we often forget that there are support professionals that are in the room with the educators. And so it's like, let's give the training to the teacher, but there are people in that same space that also need the development. And it may not be the same, obviously, because they're not maybe offering the instruction, but they're doing other things to help the student achieve the thing that they need to achieve. And so with a system as large as we are, I think we do need to be explicit about when we say, I can't remember who it was, like when we say staff, who do we mean? Do we mean you are the staff that we are pointing to and you point to the others? Or are we saying, these are all of the staff?
So I want to capture before I keep getting more, I'm sensing that we're coalescing around a goal that is related to staff work. And it's not just retaining or recruiting, but I'm also hearing staff development and even to our expectations about instructional practices. So think about, think about all those different factors as we decide, is this one goal? Is it separated into pieces? And also how we actualize that in our board work, right? Everything that we're talking about, setting expectations, we have to do at the board table. We're not going to be doing it by personally walking into classrooms. So start thinking about how that might be measured, right? What would be the product of that goal? Dr. Cooper?
Yeah, a great summation. The, to pivot to a different direction, because this is sort of my thought, my process is sort of cyclical. I'll probably come back. But before I came here today, the two topics that I thought would be really interesting to talk about were how the board could contribute to the district's goals in advancing deeper learning and in post-secondary pathways. And I had some like potential ideas about maybe as a sort of political body, there'd be a role that the board members could play in facilitating some intergovernmental relationships or developing and helping to facilitate partnerships with community groups or businesses or something. And I'm not sure if that is, it's not necessarily in the governance role, but I thought it was a place where the board could add value in a way that's complementary and would help to facilitate the outcomes we want and sort of lay the groundwork. But Superintendent, I'd love to hear your reaction to that.
You? The post-secondary pathways one is a slam dunk for exactly the reason you mentioned. It is intergovernmental and interorganizational. And we do need a convening function, a connecting function in that space. It's actually something I've proposed, that it become a focus of our local Cradle to Career Collaborative without particular traction on that just yet. But the partnerships with business, nonprofit, community organizations, post-secondary education, all on that pathways work is absolutely a community endeavor. I agree, there's a tension between board governance and then board action in that space, but I think there's also policy to make there. I would be very enthused, and I will be bringing you a proposal for some, a successor to the graduate profile that we will recommend you say is our profile that we're aiming for, and some requirements for Rochester students to graduate, like applying to post-secondary education or career pathways or things. I mean, so there'll be a policy piece, but there's a policy piece to most everything we do eventually. So I don't know. That's a fascinating shift. The deeper learning work is less immediately clear to me. It's really clear to me how board members need to nurture that work, stay updated as it evolves. It's less immediately clear to me what a board role might be for a goal on that one, but we certainly could give it some thought. Because it is our innovation work. It's work that is new work. It doesn't have a playbook that we're kind of getting from Chicago or, you know, some other place.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking in the idea of like, what are the needs three years from now that we need to start creating the conditions for?
The discussions today, which were very focused initially on the direct act of teaching and learning, and there were education support professionals there, which was awesome. They started to identify system barriers quite quickly that are like, you know, the excitement was very real, and people were like, oh, we are going to have some issues to deal with in terms of what we teach, how we teach, when we teach, to really nurture this work at a system level.
I wonder, building on this conversation, we had such a good academic piece when we read the deeper learning background work. And then we had the conversation, because I think it grounded us in ideas and words that the educators are probably more connected to because they're in the classroom every day. And some of us are teachers, so they have that background, and some of us are not. I'm wondering if there is information or material that you could bring to the board as you're evolving the deeper learning work, so that when we're hearing, when we're hearing from educators and they're, or you and you're giving us updates on what's happening in the classroom, you can bring us up to speed on that language of education that we might not have because we, you know, we don't have the background and we're not doing it. So we're not just nodding at them saying, you clearly know what we're talking about, and you've given us a great concept of how it's all being put together. But if we had one level deeper of understanding, maybe our questions would be better. Maybe we would be able to advance and think further ahead instead of just kind of monitoring as it's going along.
I'm tempted to run across the hall and get you copies of the deeper learning tree that we shared today. And it's in the office, and I would love to share it with you because the tree is the characteristics of learning, the branches are mastery, identity, creativity. And now the new thing you haven't seen are the roots are the environment for learning that nurtures deeper learning.
It might even be that, whatever you share with.
No, it's actually, now we've shared it with 150 people today, you should see it.
Yeah.
So you don't look like, what is the tree?
Yeah. Can I go, Director Garcia, first?
So I'm going to veer just slightly, because I like the way that we're thinking in terms of like what the other goals might be, but I think about this in the way that I think about a treatment plan with a client. So we had three goals. And are the goals that we had complete? We have no other objectives for that goal. We're going to replace it with something else? Or is the goal still open? Like, maybe we completed these measures of these objectives, but we want to add additional?
Are you talking about last year's goals?
Yeah. So, I mean, I know that they're marked all complete and there's information there, but are there things that we as a board maybe want to continue in, for example, improve board communication with stakeholders? Or have we mastered that? And now we need to move on to something entirely different? Because I feel like that, that would help us decide what big chunks, and then what of these very specific questions do we want to like move toward.
Okay. I'll let Director Marvin weigh in, and then I think we can go back to that. That's a good way to launch us.
Well, this has sort of been the same stable as Dr. Garcia's comment, because, you know, we had, our first goal is to improve board communication with stakeholders, and we have three different things we were going to do, but those were pretty much strategies rather than information. I don't think you can ever communicate well enough. So I think we absolutely need a communication goal. But perhaps, and we've been doing listening sessions after meeting updates, we have comments for the board, there's now a board handbook. So those are sort of the processes we've done. But I'm wondering if part of what the board, how, one way we might be useful, if we can communicate with the community more in terms of, so what is our school district doing? What is this science of learning? That science of reading that we're using now? What is deeper learning? You know, what questions do you have about what's, what these initiatives are? What is social emotional learning? And I'm not sure that the board is exactly the right group to be communicating that. As you said, you know, everybody isn't an expert on those, our staff and our administrators are. But maybe we could do a better job of communicating that. I know goals are things you're supposed to measure. I don't know if we've ever measured, are listening sessions effective? Are those after?
Just the fact that we did them can be a measure, can be a measurement.
Okay.
So it's a yes.
Again, should we continue doing, you know, are they effect, we're doing them, but check, are they effective? I don't know. I don't think we should stop just because maybe they help.
Yeah. It's complete. Yeah.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was.
But maybe we could help at least the district communicate the good work that is happening and the changes, the positive changes that have been made and that we're continuing to work on.
Well, and I think it goes to the same question of if the board needs a little better understanding of science of reading, deeper learning, social emotional learning in order to make our decisions, then those are terms of art that our community is probably even farther removed from in understanding, what was that decision they just made? Have you just made a decision to approve a curriculum for what? I don't know what deeper learning is.
And I think that's particularly important because there are certain terms that have been used nationally that are described as being something that they really are not or that they are not here. So I think it would be good to have a focus on some of that. I think just the words deeper learning, I think that's very new to this community. And I think the board could play a role. I don't know if we would want to tie that in with community listening sessions at all.
Or it could be part of our videos.
Or it could be part of our videos that we do.
That's a good way to put it, that could be in.
Director Marvin, I'm not sure if it's my talking turn again or not. It's a vibe.
That's all right. Your horse is in the running.
What we could do, you know, as you said, is have handouts prepared. And we could host sessions where we would host them, that we could also invite somebody in the district to help facilitate, to answer the kind of questions, to give a presentation, or to make, basically to do all the work. We could make a video of that that we could send out, but we could certainly host those at least.
But instead of it focusing on the individual issue that an individual comes to us and has a question about their student or about their school, which I think we've all agreed we probably still want to do, we would also have some opportunities for us to say, tonight we're going to try to educate you on this concept that is related to important decisions we just made or decisions that we're about to make, so that your questions and your feedback to us is really rooted in better knowledge.
And I see it not only as our board decisions, but if we're communicating with community members either in a group like a listening session or otherwise, we are up to speed and educated on what those terms mean.
Sure.
And I have one thing to add about the deeper learning. There's a book, because we only got the one chapter. I bought the book, so if anybody wants to really dig in.
Wow.
I haven't read it yet because that's me, but I have the book. I keep looking at the book.
It's on your bedside table.
All my stack is this.
You carry around.
So if anyone wants to borrow the book, I need to read it. So there's that.
We do have a board library of stock. Is it still in this room? What happened to it?
It's in the storage room.
The spider ones?
The spider ones.
Yeah. I'm going to go back to what Director Garcia said about last year's goals, because I think that's a really, that was also a launching point I wanted to do before we integrated these new ideas. But as Director Garcia mentioned, we had three goals last year. And I think we can stop and take a moment to pat ourselves on the back if we can reach it, because we did achieve what we said we were going to set out to do. We said we weren't going to have phones at board meetings. Oh, no, sorry. That was one of our...
It was on my watch, which I usually don't wear. I'm sorry.
I was like, that's an interesting rating, too.
Yeah.
At least, well, okay. Improve board communication with stakeholders. We recorded, we've been recording and sharing board meeting video summaries since August of 2022. Director Marvin sent an email the other day about what kind of recommendations perhaps our communications experts can give to us to make them shorter.
Because some of us, I believe, have been talking too much on those videos.
I think I probably went for the longest one.
Um, we...
Sounds like a challenge.
No, it's not. Challenge is keeping it short.
We've had four community listening conversation sessions that were open to the community. And the enthusiasm of the board members, I think we had more than a majority of the board members who came and everybody participated. We have a new school board handbook that we approved in January. Our goal number two is to continually monitor progress towards the goals and outcomes of the strategic plan. And when we set up the ABCD, we planned it so that we include agenda items at almost every meeting to track the implementation and monitor the progress on the strategic plan. And I know that there was a lot of intention on board members' part when we asked, when we... And I know that there was a lot of intention on board members' part when we asked, when we knew that the agenda item was coming up, and the superintendent gave us a preview, or we had a preliminary conversation, all the board members are really good at saying to the superintendent, "I'd like to hear about this," because we were kind of developing it as we went along. So I think that's been a successful cycle, so that we're not surprised by the information that we're getting, and the superintendent isn't surprised when he comes to, with an agenda item, we said, "Oh, we really wish you would have told us about this." And then goal three, create methods for engaging and educating the community and staff on the RPS budget. We have a community budget and finance advisory committee, and met?
September.
September. And we, the superintendent and the chief administrative officer had three virtual budget information sessions, and I don't know if any of you have seen the John Carlson, the first edition of the John Carlson video on the fund balance. If John Carlson can make an interesting video about fund balance, we can make interesting videos about.
I still really appreciate the like Sesame Street puppets, like.
Yes. There was a discussion about perhaps adding some sort of puppetry to those videos.
You listen to John, it 100% sounds like he says fun balance.
And you typed, and you typed in your tweet, "Fun balance," instead of fund?
I did. If you watch it.
I thought it was like fun for me.
It's 100% fun balance.
Fun balance.
A fun balance is when you pay the bills and have money left over.
Well, and that's, that's fun, because for the opposite, it would not be fun.
It's not fun, we will work up to.
John puts the fun in fun.
So I agree with Dr. Garcia. I think it's good to say that the measures and the milestones that we set to achieve these goals this year that we met, but keeping any or all of the goals, or modifying those goal areas, I mean, we don't need to abandon them, right? Because they were the goals for one year.
Right, because the third, I mean, just as an example for number three, create methods for engaging and educating the community and staff on the RPS budget. So obviously, there's referendum talk around, and so is that still part of this? So we can say we've mastered maybe the two objectives that we had, but we need to keep that goal and add a new one as we're having these ongoing discussions with the community? And I think that the other two also probably have things where we can say, like, this objective was met, but we still want to do more in this area.
Or do we see that goal as sort of a financial goal, and maybe shift it to a focus on the referendum, or not just the referendum, but some of the decisions the board has to make regarding our revenue that comes from property tax? Because we have that decision, then we also perhaps have the operating levy renewal.
To me, it's like a difference between, did we master, or like, is it this, just the objective complete, or did we master the goal in its entirety? And I feel like maybe none of these, to Dr. Marvin's point, are, like, the goal itself is not necessarily completely mastered, we just need to add things in, or words meant a little bit.
And so along that line of thoughts, goal one, our past goal one, communication, in that we are elected officials, I think we definitely need to keep the public in our wheelhouse, if you will. We will always find the need or have the need to inform them, hear them. The standard five advocacy and communication, the majority of those 10 elements dealt with, if you will, engaging the community. And that's something I think we need to continue to do, irrespective of, well, referendum, you know, we need something, whatnot, we need, in order for the district to become its, the best version of itself, this is the direction we want to head in, only to now reflect or refer to Dr. Marvin's comment of, it is so important for us to, for the community, and I don't lose sight of the fact that I once was, if you will, a member of the community, and would come and testify for this board. I think Julie, you may be the only person who's on board during those days, but I think it's so important to always, you know, have that access afforded to the community. Yet, at the same time, I was always confused, in fact, a former board member, Gary Smith, we saw each other socially, and I asked him one time about, well, why is it that, you know, I come and pour my heart out, if you will, to the board, and you just sit there and look at me and nod? And, though, I would come with that sense of feedback, communication, and so communication, could we do a better job in communicating? I do have observed recent board chairs saying, "Do you want us to get back with you regarding the concerns you've raised?" I think that's very important. And, and my own way, and I think other board members try to weave a public comment inquiry into maybe a item that the board might be discussing, just to allow that member of the public to be aware that they were heard, that their voice is important. And for me, that is really the bottom line of it all, in regards to, you know, our goal one, the MSBA evaluation standard five, honoring, valuing all voices, especially as we move forward, because the need to hear all voices becomes that much more important, and so.
So I'm hearing that we would like to maintain a communication with stakeholders goal. Is the, is the way it's reflected currently, that language? I mean, no, we're committed to continuous improvement. I, yeah, I don't see any reason to change that, although I see Director Marvin.
Well, I'm thinking that if we keep, our first goal is improve board communication with stakeholders, and then we discuss specific things we're going to do there. Maybe our, I see the third goal about educating the community about the RPS budget. I see that a little bit not as critical right now. When we developed this one, there was a whole lot of misinformation about how the district was handling its budget. We're making cuts, there was a three-year plan, there was all kinds of misinformation, and people were feeling that there wasn't transparency. So I think, I think now we've established a model so that people do understand, so it is more transparent, we've got the community group. But I could see that one switching to creating methods for engaging, educating the community and staff on school district initiatives, and that could include things like deep, what's deeper learning, like maybe what's the referendum about? Like, I mean, we could have four or five different initiatives that we think are important. And maybe that just means making sure that we bring those up, we have those explained at board meetings, but that, this social emotional learning continues to play to me, because people, some people have such an incorrect idea about what that is. I mean, we know it's important, and we know it's making a big difference, and I'm just wondering if we need to continue to highlight that in other initiatives, like science of reading throughout the year in a number of different ways.
And I, I agree with the intent. I would think it would be important for us, in that second piece, when we talk about specifically what we're going to do, to commit to something that we can all agree is going to be the board, where the board's energy and investment. So for example, if it's a agenda item, right, if it's, if it's something we're going to add to the ABCD periodically, if it's going to be an extra community event, where we specifically focus on that, if it's going to be definitional, right, like that, I don't think we, I don't think we should leave it up to us individually to say, when you're speaking at the board table, make sure you weave in these terms, because I think it puts too much, well, Don did it five times, and Kathy's only done it once. Is that really a board, you know, kind of?
Could turn into a bingo game of some sort.
Exactly, right.
Then we could accurately answer whether we always do it, sometimes do it, blah, blah, blah.
Right, exactly. So is that what you're thinking, that we would then commit to, when you say, engaging the community and staff on RPS initiatives, would we choose some initiatives, and then choose some delivery vehicles for that goal?
Yeah, and I think that's what we need to do in terms of, how do we make that actionable? What's that going to look like? And I think because we're not the experts, I think we need to work in tandem with Dr. McCall and others to determine what's going to really be the most effective way, so that our community, those people who have kids in school and those who don't, really know what this district is about. And certainly not everything, but let's choose maybe three or four important initiatives that we're, we're doing, because we know that they're going to help kids do better.
Kathy, I would kind of add to that, too, that I see that not only under a communication goal, but also I'm, my second potential goal structure is something about the strategic plan implementation, and I see that goal fitting under there, too, because things like focusing on belonging under the strategic plan, I think only because I sit on the board do I know that social emotional learning is part of that belonging, that that's not something that general community would necessarily know. And I think that's where we can tie both a communication piece, but also an implementation piece of, to help the entire district implement the strategic plan.
Director, what do you think?
I think the other thing we want to consider is what the structure of these initiatives might take. So for example, engaging, educating the community and staff on the RPS budget, and it was an incredible amount of time and work that Melissa and I did on creating that charge statement for the initial budget committee, and a lot of back and forth with Dr. McCall and Mr. Carlson about, well, do we do this, or we do that, or do we do something else? So I think we need to take that into consideration, because if we have too many really big initiatives of that magnitude, it's going to really, it could really test people's, I don't want to say their will to get things done, but could really be a whole lot more involved than what any of us might expect initially.
And I think we crossed that line a little bit last year, when we set the goal for educating the community and staff on the budget, and I think we acknowledged that when we set that goal, that we were really asking John Carlson to educate the community and staff on the budget. And I think, as I hear you talk about the initiatives, I'm wondering if tonight we might be able to choose some initiatives to focus on, or, two ways. We can choose some initiatives to focus on, and then perhaps our first step is to charge a subcommittee on the board to come up with the different vehicles by which we might deliver them, because that's a conversation we need to have with the superintendent about capacity of staff, you know, what, what those expectations might be. Or we could even charge a subcommittee to come up with a few initiatives, and then we can bring it back to the board table to decide what those initiatives might be, and then the second step to, to come up with the vehicle.
And you just said, either way, and then the question is, do we as a board sort of decide, this is what, we're community members, this is what we think, these are the things we think our community needs to know about? Or do we go to the superintendent in the cabinet and say, what are the initiatives that this district is doing that you really need people to know about? And we just leave it up to you to do that, and then we go on and determine how we're going to get that information on?
I think we could do both.
I wouldn't necessarily limit it just to what community needs to know, but where do they need our support?
Yeah, because like, we are going to hear from the community what they want to know, or what we perceive they don't know based on the emails they send us, and they will recognize within the district, like what stakeholders inside of the buildings also either need to communicate or want clarified. So I think we could ask, we had both those, both of those things occurring.
All right, so thoughts on, I mean, I heard from Director Marvin that we possibly have a way to modify the third goal, which is to create methods for engaging the community and, or engaging and educating the community and staff on RPS initiatives. So that could be a goal, and one of our first measures or action steps would be to, because I'm getting the sense we don't have our initiative list tonight, we have ideas we could throw out, but there's things we probably must, to have a subcommittee of the board identify initiatives in collaboration with the superintendent. And then Jess, you'll have to let me know how you might bring that feedback from the community in, to that. Is that something you want to have happen before we identify our initiatives? Is to say, what is it that you don't know about? Or is it something that we're judging based on the feedback as we go along?
I mean, I feel like we could, at a minimum, informally ask, but I think we all do also have lots of data about what things they struggle to understand, either by comments to the board, however they come, in person, or via email or phone call, that there's usually a theme.
My thought would be to decide for our, I mean, not, not that we're going to be, of course, we're going to be responsive to the community and to stakeholders, but to first decide for ourselves what we think is important to, what are the, what are the messages we think are important for the community to know about RPS? Because I think one of the roles that the board has, whether they want it or not, they set the tone, they create cultural norms, and they, they, you know, collectively, by the decisions that we make, and the way that we make them, and the tenor of our discussions, we, we communicate what is important in this district. And so if we decide that.
To us.
Well, yeah, and I think.
But we're also out of touch with certain groups of stakeholders.
But it, I guess what I.
It can be both.
Sure. And what I, what I'm suggesting is that we could decide to provide information about deeper learning, which we know is a, something that is new, it's innovative, it's a, I think the more people know about it, the more they'll like it, because it has so much going for it, but, you know, is not widely known in the general community. And there's, there's, you know, we could host an event, we could decide to focus on community leaders and do a relatively small thing, and let that multiply, you know, through other communication channels, but having sort of an open question and answer opportunity, I don't know.
Well, that wasn't my suggestion. I meant more like, we could just, like, yeah, we could just request that feedback, like literally put on Twitter. But also, we already know what, you know, we know things like deeper learning, like those will be things that we already know, like, okay, we definitely want, and I think if we don't ask the community to some capacity, that's a poor move on our part.
Well, and just quickly, and I think we should take staff out of there, because it's our job to educate the staff on what they're doing.
Superintendent?
This fascinating conversation, and I, I throw this out there, and you can throw it away. I mean, you are the governing board of this district, not the communications department, so I'm trying to keep this at your level, and it seems to me there's a refinement here. On the front end of like making decisions, which is ultimately what you do, you vote and make decisions, there's soliciting input. On the back end, there's explaining why you decided what you decided. And so in some ways, rather than characterizing, I apologize, it's a serious, cause I've got some medical stuff for my mom, but it's not an emergency. On the front end, there's soliciting feedback on deeper learning as the governing body, as opposed to explaining it to us. So like, if you were doing feedback sessions and things, and you're like, "We can't, people are starting to think of deeper learning, like social emotional learning," I mean, you know, hearing that, or, boy, people are jazzed about that, but they're worried about, where's the family engagement part of people? So it's like, it's like feedback on the strategic goals, and then it does occur to me, as I'm listening to you talk, that when you have made. And then it does occur to me, as I'm listening to you talk, that when you have made decisions, especially major decisions, like about the budget, like about start times, I don't know, except in your individual lives, how much board members have gone out to explain those decisions once you've made them. Like, it's often left to us as staff to say, well, the board decided this on start times, but you ultimately made that decision, you know? I mean, I made a recommendation, I think that's my job. So it, and the notion of having, and you have some big decisions coming up in the year ahead, that the board would have a goal to help people understand why you decided the way you did. Then you're out talking about your work as opposed to kind of staff, like, here's why we voted the way we did on the transfer, you know, we have to bring you some recommendations on transportation by December 1. There are going to be, you know, big decisions, and you're going to make a decision. And then to say, we as a board are going to actually explain why we did it. And then the other piece is the front end, we're going to solicit feedback on strategic priorities. I don't know, I'm just trying to find a refinement that puts it at your level. Not that I think the staff level is not critical, but like you're the governing board. So a goal that's just about disseminating, like, I love it, Moms who would love it. But that's not really what you do as the policy leaders.
I'm wondering if some of it of what you say is not explaining after the fact why we made a decision, but what those elements are that are going to be considered before we make the decision, if that's possible. Because, I mean, we've all gotten communication from people who are calling us at the last minute, you know, like, well, have you thought of this and this and this? And maybe we have, maybe we haven't, maybe it hasn't been articulated very well. But I don't know if we need to be more intentional about that?
I think so. Because I, in my perception while running, is 2020 board and earlier, that we wouldn't as a board explain anything that we do. It is, we made the decision, period, we're not having a conversation about it because there, I think, were weird expectations about like, even if I were to vote no on something that passed, I'm not supposed to say why I would vote no because I needed to show that I was in favor of the board. But I don't necessarily think that that's, like, I have to pretend like I didn't vote no in support of what happened. I think we could still explain, this is, this is what went into the decision making. So like the bell, bell time shift, for example, it felt like, you know, a lot of the community members were like, you're looking at the science and you made the exact opposite, like, scheduled decision. Why did you do that? And no one wanted to explain. So we got a lot of people asking us very pointedly, like, why did you bring it back up? What happened? And so you're having that one-on-one conversation. But it doesn't get disseminated to the rest of the community because it's one person who's like cornering you after a meeting wanting to know why, because it affected them personally. But if we give that information, I think that that's helpful. And to me, that feels more clear, even if you're not saying, I personally voted this way because, but helping to explain the process and the why and what those things are going to mean in the future.
And I sort of look at it as like maybe a 2.0 of our board summaries.
Yeah.
Is that we not, maybe not so much on the nitty gritty details, but wrapping in some of that, at least on a topic, you know, to try it out, to see how it works.
Well, and I.
I have some board members who have raised their hand, Director.
What's that?
Sorry. The horses were out of the barn, I got to bring them back.
Sheriff's in town.
I'm going to go, Director.
Yeah, I'm looking at this the same way you are, and I think the same way you are. This is what we're doing, what the board decided and whether, well, probably should be board actions. And full transparency, this is why. I think that's exactly it, just educate people. This is what we voted for, this is why we thought it was a good idea. Now, I don't know, we can do that once a quarter, maybe, you know? What were some of the key, I wish we could do some retroactively, like, did we vote on deeper learning? Are we just?
As part of the strategic plan, you definitely did.
Okay, so like that one.
That's more robust on deeper.
That's the transparency, and this is why we, we support it. And just take the issues.
Director.
Just a refinement.
Okay, go ahead.
Just to say, explain, it also can be the thing that you grappled with but didn't do. So it's not just legitimate.
Yeah.
We considered this issue and reluctantly recognized we didn't have the resources to do this, so we did this. I apologize, wanted to say, it's not just legitimate why we did the right thing, why we, why we struggled and we landed where we did, but sometimes to acknowledge, and maybe to acknowledge disagreement on the board. Some board members felt this, ultimately the wisdom of the full board felt here.
Well, no, and I think you're getting at what I was going to say, which is, rather than after the fact, having to explain to somebody, well, this is what I thought and this is why I voted the way I did, is that has to happen before anybody votes, I think. So that otherwise, I mean, people will say to me, well, how are you going to vote on an issue? And I'm going to say, I don't know, I won't know until we have had that full discussion at the board table, because other board members will inevitably share a perspective that I had not yet considered. And that might move me to making a slightly different decision, or it might bring up, you know, some, some counterpoint to what they're actually suggesting. So I think some of that, that sausage making hasn't, I mean, I think that has to happen before we vote. And I think in previous years, just decisions were made without maybe much thought at all. And then you get, oh, my gosh, why did you make that decision? And it's sort of like, well, yeah, we should probably have considered this and this and this and this, and we didn't. Which I think is, you know, one of the things that I really appreciate about this particular board is that we are all, I think, we're tuned to that a whole lot more than we were in the past.
Director.
Actually, my fellow board members have captured a great deal of what I would have said.
Well, and I think about this before, during and after timing because I think one of the goals that we were trying to meet when we established the ABCD was something that was always frustrating to me before I was on the board. And what I heard from the community is I didn't know you were going to talk about this. If I had known you were going to talk about this, I would have brought 20 of my friends and I would have told you, you know, the way I wanted you to vote. And we had hoped that by putting out a calendar for the year, and I've said this to people multiple times, if you're really passionate about X, it's coming up in two months. We have not seen an increase in communication from our stakeholders because of that structure. It's definitely helped us do our work better. I think it has helped the kind of information we get in a preparation for action and an action cycle much clearer if they're watching. But that whole, those community members are passionate about education, now have a chance to know we're going to talk about it, come hear us talk about it, have a time to get back to us if they want us to consider anything else before we decide on it. That hasn't happened. And I don't know what we can, what more we can think about doing as a board in that middle space. Because you're right, Julie, we shouldn't be making our decision until we've had the conversation and we've heard what everybody has to say. So it's hard to go out before we make the decision and, you know, share all of our different perspectives. But how can we activate that interest, that information sharing, so that we are getting some good informed feedback from our community before we take the vote? Because afterwards, they say, well, it's too late, you already made a vote, not going to change your mind.
Well, I think some of this could be handled by our communications department, maybe, in just alerting the media, the media, that, you know, two months from now or two weeks from now, the board is going to be discussing this particular issue. Or here's what you have to look forward to this next quarter that's on their calendar. Just so people can, you know, if they're paying attention at all, that they're actually thinking about that. I mean, we can't make people pay attention. I mean, there's only so much we can do to, to make sure that they, you know.
I think they maybe don't even understand like our timeline either. So like, how soon before the vote do I, you, her, he, him, they, need to know the information from you as the constituent before I go to the board table? So I think that's a little bit confusing, too. So if somebody was looking tonight at, like, today, what our agenda is, but had seen it maybe on the ABCD and was like, oh, the school board is going to do their evaluation, but it's a study session, like, I'm not really sure what that means. Do I give them my feedback now? Do I wait and listen to this particular recording and then give them my feedback? Because I think their goal should be XYZ, their, whatever it is that they're choosing maybe isn't effective. But then by the time we bring it to a vote, it's like, maybe we saw their email at 4:00 PM right before our 5:30 meeting and maybe not. And so like how, if they're not getting that immediate, like, reinforcement, I guess, from us, that their response does matter and it did affect my vote, why would they give us that information?
One way to, Director.
Everybody's going to be mad at me now, but I'm, I'm raising my hand. So it sounds to me like we're looking at two kinds of listening sessions. One, where people can just come in and tell us what they want us to know, you know? Get information, whatever. Second one would be sort of issue focused. We're going to have a listening session on this day to get your feedback on these two issues. What we'll do is just listen and take notes. So that would be communications, listening goals. And then the other one would be kind of education and explaining after decisions are made, having sessions where we can, or figuring out ways that we can communicate, this is why the board voted or didn't vote for a particular issue. But I see communication and being maybe the listening, and, well, I guess they're all communication. But the one where we would provide information and explanation to the community that would be kind of coming from the board to the public. For me, that would replace goal number three that we had before. Superintendent.
First of all, I think you're doing quite well on the front end piece. It can always get better. I, I just have to say, I would be very conservative in setting goals that measure community input in the ways that we currently get that input. We are a stunningly diverse school district. There are few that are, the more I get to know Rochester, the more excited I am about this, but the more staggered I am. There are many urban districts, of which we are one, but, you know, not Minneapolis, but there are many urban districts in which there is a tiny, if any, socioeconomically advantaged population in the district anymore. They're here, they're in Rochester Public Schools. We also have a population of our district of families who are living in highly stressed situations and are from historically marginalized communities. And I love that they all go to our schools. I can't tell you how unique that is. Now, that's not true in each school in Rochester, but it's strikingly true as a district as a whole. And when we prioritize feedback from and communication with the people who come to meetings and send you emails, with some exceptions, we know we're missing a segment. And we've named that, and we need to keep getting better at that. And the more I get into this, the more I think that's, that's going to come more through relationships at the school and program level than it is to me or you at the system level. Like, how do we have pathways at the building level where there are relationships? Where we get feedback on the decision you have to make, but it's coming from those relationships at the building level? Because I think that feedback can come there more likely, but we don't have the protocols, like, you know, and processes for that. But, you know, you talk to an equity specialist, they can tell you what they're hearing and they can feel it, but we don't get that. So I just want to, I want to have a real cautionary point in measuring the board's success and community input through the channels that we currently have. But we need to keep getting better. And you as board members have your varying personal networks. I'm talking about our institutional process, you know?
And even our personal networks are not, individually, we don't cover all of those, all of those groups.
We could, I think, we could decide collectively as a board to task each of us with some type of outreach that would help to address that. It would still be limited to personal networks of a type, but through, I don't know, but joining other nonprofit boards or other, not sort of boards, but other groups. Or, I mean, I know we're all busy enough, but if, I, what I was trying to say is that if we wanted to address that gap, it wouldn't necessarily have to be something, I don't think, that we did all together concurrently, like we have done with our school board listening sessions. We could have as a goal that each of us do something.
Director, one, I think the value of some of those listening sessions, as you said, it's not so that we'll do what people tell us to do. Because I think we are keenly aware that so many of the people we hear from are, we don't hear from a broad representation of people. And I think we're keenly aware of that. So when we make decisions, we, we're sure that we know what some people in the community are saying and also what our staff, what our other parents, what our companies tell us are telling us. And I think that we're keenly aware of that, that in all of our listening sessions that we've had so far, we've had very few people with very specific issues. And it's important, I think, that they know they have their respective, they've been heard, that they don't represent a whole district.
Director Garcia.
But I do wonder about Director Cook's point, like, is it worth it to us to not just acknowledge that there are gaps, but to actually attempt to reduce the gap that exists? So, yeah, we're not going to speak to all 110,000 people or 120,000 people that live in this district or in the city. But might we charge ourselves with doing more than we are to hear those voices?
And I would wonder about the accountability piece. I think obviously we can do more if seven of us are moving in seven different directions. But how do we, how do we hold each other accountable to that work? And sort of making sure we all don't go to the same communities, right? The ones that are already easily accessible? Versus acknowledging the communities for whom our current structures work, even if they may not take advantage of it, right? And then maybe thinking about some additional vehicles to specifically outreach to some communities. And maybe it's a pilot, right? Maybe it's not, we're going to cover every other community in the district, but maybe we choose one to build something around and then see if it works, and then we can expand it to others. Yes?
That's, I was saying, that's what I was thinking in terms of, so goal one, that second objective. So for our listening conversation sessions, if we could go back to, you know, Dr. Ruck to pull out, like, what is the general breakdown of race or SES or whatever it is? And where are we missing people based on what our demographics are for the entirety of our district? And then put those listening sessions in those places. So if we're routinely missing something, we should just go there. So maybe it's not us individually right now doing that, maybe that's a personal thing. But having the goal one, objective two being continue to improve board communications with stakeholders, and then by September 30th, 2024, or 2023, whatever, set a schedule for quarterly community listening conversation sessions for X school year within these demographic parameters or whatever.
Right. And as opposed to, and maybe we have some that are here, but then the others were going to wherever the people are that we need to hear from. Director.
So I don't think we necessarily have to reinvent the wheel. I'm not sure of the department or organizational name for community edu, not education, but Sprig, Sprigler, Craig.
Family Engagement.
Family Engagement, okay. They're currently doing much of what we are considering trying to do. And why not just perhaps, and I am the liaison representative to that particular group, committee assignment. And so I can reach out to them. Jennifer, let her know that we're wanting to do more, and she could probably plug us into what they're currently doing. I mean, the, the work has already occurred. And they're making enroofs into a lot of the communities that we're saying, I don't even know, you know, how to begin or where to start. So I'll make that commitment to do that. And then secondly, I believe it's tomorrow, the MSBA, is it the MDE? Or one of the state departments will be releasing current demographic information for the state of Minnesota. current demographic information for the state of Minnesota, with the goal in mind to provide more of the information we already know in terms of, of not just diversity within onset county, but statewide, and maybe even offer some strategies in terms of how we might be able to, districts across the state of Minnesota might be able to, more effectively plan for and currently engage themselves in serving those communities. So if you have the time tomorrow, I'd encourage you to log on an MDE that I know I plan on. And it seems like the superintendent was already aware of it, and I don't know your availability, but it'll be important to know the direction we're headed in the state, as well as the direct impact, impact in regards to the county.
So what I hear, because it's 6:30, so I wanna try to get us in a direction. I hear that we wanna keep the goal one for improving board communication with stakeholders. And I'm hearing a desire to reach out to communities that we have traditionally not necessarily heard from. We don't know who those communities might be, and we don't know how we might do it. Director Barlow, I hesitate for a minute to, I don't wanna say burden, but to step on the work of the family engagement team, because I, I'm, in my mind, I wanna keep this really focused on board, our board work. I would not intend for any of this to be, we're going to go supersede their parent workshop training from BK, for example. We're not there to help parents understand how to be better advocates for their kids. We'd specifically be focusing on either decisions that are coming up as a board, or decisions that we have already had as a board, or those general listening sessions where people bring their issues to us, because I don't see, think we've seen a lot of diversity in the communities we've seen there.
Well, certainly, let me respond in terms of clarifying my intent. It was not to impede any of the work that we're doing, it was simply to avail ourselves of the information they have. Director Cook, and I think many of us have said, well, I am, I'm not even sure, you know, who to contact, where to go. So rather than trying to from scratch figure that out, I think a basic call could perhaps say, yeah, here's a list of the known organizations, communities, and we'll make it available to you. We could maybe even find out what they're doing, so we don't have to duplicate, or what communication channels we've already established. So I'm very much aware of the work they're engaged in. It was not to try to get into their work.
And, and just, and I think Don, what Don's talking about too, is that the family engagement committee has family nights. They just go to a neighborhood, they have dinner, they have stuff for the kids. And it might be worth asking if a couple of board members could sort of be there in the event people wanted to talk with them. But, I mean, they have a really good network of neighborhoods and places and outreach. And they may say, no, it's gonna have a chilling effect. We don't want any of that, but.
I would just say, I appreciate the discussion. We would be pleased to help the board connect with those communities if you help us prioritize them. The work Jennifer's leading is a great example, and so is the work Lita Casper's leading on the community organization side. So I, yeah, we would be glad if this is a priority for the board. Just to state the obvious, it all depends on how much they wanna hear from us and talk with us, but we can certainly be more proactive in that outreach. I know I'm looking forward to doing that tied to the referendum. I've been absolutely seeing this as kind of the next wave of my work as superintendent with the community in providing information. So I'm gonna be spending time knocking on those doors as well. So it's potentially a good time for us to provide support for the board. It's definitely a good time for us to provide support for the board in that area.
Well, and I think those are all good ways to connect to the who, but I don't think we've quite landed on the what. Because I agree, I've been the board member, I think we've all been the board member in some of those communities, and we haven't talked about board work. And so as a board, is our, what is our intention in terms of the back of the two-way communication that we're looking for to bring to these communities that maybe we haven't been able to reach before? Is it where your representative, where your elected representative on the school board, you put a face to us, this is how you get ahold of us. If something comes up in the future that you need to share, maybe they'll be more likely to share because they've met us, they know we're people, they know we care. Or are we looking to do something really more intentional to raise the capacity and the connection so that they can connect with our work when it's really gonna impact their community or their students in the future? Director Cook?
I also think we really need to make it clear what is board work and what is not board work. You know, so many of the concerns that they bring to us directly, they haven't followed the chain of communication, which is if you're having a problem or concern between your child and their teacher, the board is not the first place to start. And so I think, I mean, even just some of board basics like that is what does the board do and how do we do it? And what is their role in terms of how, you know, how they address issues? Is the, you know, we've had this conversation.
Right.
I mean, it's nice that they, that they think that, you know, that we are all very caring and wonderful, and we need to convey that to them. But at the same time, I mean, we've got that list to say, hey, this is where your concern is. I empathize, whatever, but this is the process you need to follow.
And for some people, they may not understand that it may unintentionally delay the resolution to their issue, because we're just going to make sure it goes to the right person.
Exactly.
And in some cases, people are intentionally bypassing the system because they think we have some weight or sway that we can tell people to do something when we really can't.
Well, I would say, I mean, yes, certainly, we need to help people understand, but if we're talking about those particular groups, if we start off by saying, this is the way you should and should not talk to us, we might as well not even show up. But what I was thinking of the two things that you said, like, to merge them. So if we did just take goal one, that second objective, and maybe wordsmith it a little bit, that it could still be a listening and conversation session, as we do for everyone, but we are already being intentional because we're asking groups of people who already have these people in their rolodex. So if we are calling somebody from Pomoja Woman, or La Michoacana Puripacha, or whatever, like, we're calling these people to say, like, we're gonna show up and have a listening session in or near your place. We will be there to talk to your community if you would like for us to be there. Right. So we're doing both. Like, we're tapping people already that have the connection, and we're listening like we would to anyone else.
Right.
But being a little bit more intentional about how we cultivate that relationship.
So bring it to them with people that we're establishing a connection with.
Right.
And just to try to put some numbers and boundaries to this, we had four general information sessions this year. Are we thinking that we want to have a few open information sessions like we had, and then some targeted ones? And what's a number that you think this board can remember, find dates for, and commit for? What's our, what's our realistic boundary? Keeping in mind, as the superintendent mentioned, we are all going to be out in the community in the next few months, providing information on the referendum. So we will have opportunities to be out in the community. We also have to consider what that means for all of our schedules and when we can schedule this. But I'm looking for some, we did four this year. Most of us came, and we worked on the dates so that it would work for most people. How did four feel? Can we do it with four? Can we do it with six? Can we do it with eight? What's the, was like to use an odd number?
I thought four was about right.
Four, yeah, four was good. And there were so many of us there each time.
Right. So are we thinking we could do two general and then two targeted?
Depends on what the targets are.
Well, eight, we would identify a not, not necessarily underrepresented community that we, that we're trying to better connect.
Okay.
Using some of the connections that we might identify from family engagement or elsewhere in the district.
Could we do one here and then do three of them in other places? We'll go to wherever. I mean, just, it's as simple as that. Just, we'll go to where people are and just listen. And then I think the whole thing about educating people about what we're doing, or explaining why we voted, to me, that's a whole different structure.
So four listening sessions, one here, three in the community, locations TBA, using some of the information we have about our connections within some of our diverse communities. Yes? Okay. So that's one goal.
Yeah.
Do we wanna say anything about that, the information piece? That was a whole other, this is listening. Now, we had a lot of people talk about wanting to provide information about either our decision-making or our language of our work, of the district's work.
So I have a question about, maybe this'll make it easier. So for goal one, that first objective, obviously, we have been, the protocol was created to make viewer-friendly accessible summaries. Is that one that we want to just say, like, we are going to continue to post viewer-friendly accessible summaries as like something we actually want to do? And I think, I don't remember who it was, made a comment about, like, might we include that information? Or does it need to be separated? Or are we done with our summaries? Like, are they effective? Does anybody watch them?
I personally, and it goes to what Director Marvin said about length, I think play-by-play of every, I think we choose how to highlight and what we wanna highlight. I don't think we, you know, all talk about the agenda item by agenda item, play-by-play. I think we usually kind of pick the highlights. But I think that's a vehicle that we could use to maybe start confusing some more of that informational piece. Although, in two minutes, I don't know that, a deeper learning, this is deeper learning in two minutes.
So do we just wanna commit to that same one as its own thing, but it's by September 30th, 2023, we're just going to continue to post those? So we've already got that one established, and then create a second, a second objective?
Or we could just make this part of our standard operating procedure and not, have the goal, we could look at these goals as things new that we're growing into, and just say, we're gonna make this part of our standard operating procedure, put it in, for example, migrate it to the school board handbook as this is what we do, as opposed to making it a goal to do it, because we're already doing it.
Right.
I think the school board handbook, I think is, it's primarily designed for, for new board members, correct? I mean, that was the intention at least initially. But what I'm, what I'm thinking is, should we have a piece in our normal meetings where we, you know, what does the school board do? And we have a five-minute something that could go in there. I'm thinking about somehow making this, dovetailing this with School Board Academy, which we're gonna have to do, well, we don't have to, if we're gonna do it. It's coming up in March or April, because next year is an election year. And a lot of the questions that we got from people were so, wow, they had absolutely no idea, but they were relying, you know, are we relying on that format to get information to people versus taking little tidbits and incorporating them as part of our regular meeting? Or, I don't know, videos with puppets sounds good, too.
I feel like our Tik, we need to have a TikTok account.
You really want us to do a Ted Talk?
I'm just, just like.
All right. So how does that feed into, let me go back to Director Garcia's question about the goal. So we are keeping a goal in improving board communication stakeholders. We have one measure of the four sessions, one here, three in the community, having listening sessions. We have, I wanna say we've completed the goal, because we've started a process of having the videos that can move somewhere else, that can move into one of our school board procedures. So that we, if you wanna put it somewhere where we're, it's a commitment that we're gonna continue to do that. I don't know necessarily it has to be a goal, because I'll remind you of it every Monday, so that we can kind of free it up to.
I'm okay with that.
Is that okay? Okay. So for improving board communication with stakeholders, is there any other measure, piece, implementation, target, either related to information we wanna provide, Director Cook?
One thing that actually I learned about MSBA yesterday that, that I, seems like pretty, pretty easy to achieve, would be to have perhaps a rotating board member commit to be here at least 15 to 20 minutes before board meetings start, where there are going to be speakers or anyone, and, and kind of be a greeter, and just welcome people, thank them for coming. I know that, I know Director Barlow, I've seen you do that, maybe not with, with that specific goal in mind, but just kind of naturally welcoming people to this environment and making sure that they feel comfortable here. And I, I kind of like that. I, I think that that would be well received and relatively impactful for the amount of commitment it would require.
Director.
One of, one of the things we might wanna consider doing or not, happened long before I was on the board, but there was a period of time before the board meeting began. I think it was sort of like the comments to the board, but it gave the community an opportunity to actually ask us questions or interact with us before the formal board meeting began. And instead of being up on the dais, we all sat about, board members sat about where we are right now. And then the community could ask us questions or bring up, you know, whatever, with a defined length of time. I don't know if it was 15 minutes or half an hour. But I don't know if that would be useful or not.
You know, I kind of like Director Cook's idea of having a greeter. It sort of functions the same thing, and welcome, and people have questions, that's the person they can ask. Maybe that's, it would be an easy way to start at least.
Is that something that you want to make in measure for the improving board communication with stakeholders? Is establish a schedule of board member greeters for 15 to 20 minutes before each meeting?
I know, we have some, some members who have those job things, and it's tough to get here that early.
Well, that was why I suggested the rotating, because I, I'm sure I would struggle to do it every time, but I could probably do it every seventh time.
Every seventh, yes. Okay. So I will add that.
Then it's better remembering it's your time then, too. Another sign up.
Director, or sorry, Superintendent.
I just feel compelled. I recently accepted an invitation from a local organization called the Freedom Forum. It was a very interesting conversation. And they talked about this, board members coming out to talk to people. They also strongly suggested we not have the dividing line in the same conversation that broke, which we did during COVID. But it was very interesting that this issue came up. And they had the sense that it used to be different. So I don't feel I would be representing that conversation if I didn't mention that at this time, that this would be conversant with what they were saying they wanted to see happen in that one particular segment of the.
Julie, could you give a little bit more description of how that worked? Like, I mean, all seven, and people are talking all at once, or?
Well.
It's just like a coffee hour.
Honestly, I, I have to admit, I didn't really necessarily attend school board meetings all that frequently. You know, it was that whole, your job as a teacher during the day, and the last thing you wanna do is.
Oh, this is before you were on the board?
Oh, yeah, this was before I was on the board. So, Jean, maybe you remember? I mean, I, I think we'd have to be really careful for it not to turn into some kind of a free-for-all. We've experienced what that's like, and I don't really care to go there again. So maybe it's better that we just maintain our, you know, comments to the board that we currently have, and, and try the, the greeter thing that Director Cook suggested, in terms of making people feel welcome.
And I guess I'd give the flip side of that, that I know you particularly and other electives in the community have done coffee hours, when you talk about coffee hour, and people don't come. So I don't know if our world has just changed that much that that's not a thing anymore.
Yeah. Well, and, I mean, it's, I don't wanna bring up this topic, because it's eight minutes to seven, but one of the things to consider is how we're structuring our comments to the board. But one of the things to consider is how we're structuring our comments to the board. And we've, we talked about it in the past when we created the structure for it now. But there was a practice in the past where we allow people to sign up on the evening of the board meetings, as opposed to registering ahead of time. Is that something that would allow more community members, more flexibility to be able to come and sign up by five or probably five o'clock, just to give our assistant school board clerk the, the chance to find out how many people we have, et cetera? We could still keep the similar issues of how long it is and how, how much time we allot. But that might, so.
I, I would really like to start at least with what Justin's suggesting. We could be there in 20, 30 minutes ahead of time and just if there are questions, then we can engage with them. The idea of having more speakers that we don't know about, my main concern about that is just sort of a structural one. If we have student groups, for instance, that are coming, parents that are going to show up. And we know that we're going to have two speakers. Now, if we find out at the last minute, oh, guess what, there's eight, that kind of adds another half hour or so under their wait time and getting rides back and forth and stuff. And I just think it's courteous to people who are attending to give them a ballpark idea about when they'll have their time at a board meeting.
Which we would know if we keep our restriction on signing up by five o'clock the night before. Director Garcia?
I think it's also okay to acknowledge we made a lot of those differences for concerns of safety. So whether it was COVID or people bringing weapons into the boardroom, I, I think maybe starting small and trying to expand the, like, how do we share more intimate space with the community, knowing that there are individuals who show up who give us a little bit of pause sometimes. So I'm not, you know, I definitely want to be more accessible. And I think it's okay to acknowledge that each one of us probably has a different limit about what is acceptable behavior to us. And I think we then, as the board, need to determine, like, our general shared version of that. So like, if, let's say, Director McLaughlin didn't feel comfortable being that close, either because she has medical or whatever the concern may be, that we allow or not, like, demand or request that she, you know, compromise her own safety for that. And/or if we know, based on social media, that there are going to be people who are showing up to the meeting that maybe are recognizing now that we're accessible prior to the meeting and that it's going to create, like, a time fluctuation issue that we have the ability, or we've already worked through with each other, the ability to figure out, like, how do we control for those sorts of things?
And we're not talking about that meet and greet period being at 5:30. We're talking about 15 minutes to 20 minutes before the meeting. And we will, we will continue to start the meetings promptly at, at 5:30, even if we're in mid-conversation.
But the same with the sign, the same with the people signing up, like, we structured that because there was a lot of concern about what was going to happen in the meeting.
And I think I can ask our assistant school board clerk, but the amount of people who we are hearing from who said, I missed the sign up, I want to speak tonight, has been minimal. So it's not like, it's not like we're hearing a lot of feedback that our system is particularly restrictive.
Kathy, can I ask one question? The general paragraph that you give to the audience on every time, are we, I know you're referencing other ways to communicate, but could we wrap in there a little bit more phrase? If you are here and wanted to talk about something on the agenda tonight and you weren't able to sign up, do it this way instead. Maybe be a little bit more intentional of
How to sign up?
How to sign up? Either how to sign up or how to communicate with us if you didn't get to speak. Send us an email or call or whatever.
Director Workman? Or no, I'm sorry, Superintendent?
I think the idea of having one of you here is a great idea. I probably should join you, but I'm almost always getting last-minute stuff done. I would strongly recommend that that not be described as an opportunity for input on board issues as much as board collegiality. Now, anybody can raise anything. But one of the biggest tensions I know for board members, and it happens with me all the time, is people who have a concern that really is better addressed at another level, just saying, shoot, I'm going to the top. And it's very, I still don't have the art down very well to say, actually, thank you for reaching out to me. You need to talk to your principal about that, because people then feel kind of rejected. Because you don't, so if you open the door and they say, wait a minute, I came, I knew you'd be here, so I want to tell you about why, you know, I don't like my kid's art teacher. And so I think this is a wonderful option and people can, as I say, bring up anything, but that its intent is, you know, welcoming, greeting, good to see you, but not describe it as an opportunity. Because unlike your input sessions, which you have carefully structured at a time outside the moment you're going to be making decisions, this is right before you're, you're going to be voting on something. And so I would just, the way we message it, it's a great idea, I think.
Well, if we can, and if we can have some, you know, some of those handouts, and I think we've got some of them already to hand out at our, at our quarterly listening sessions, to, to hand to people to, you know, if they do bring up something, you know, like, my child doesn't like their art teacher.
We have to work on that across the system, 100%. It's a, it's an issue I've seen since I got here and just have not slowed myself down enough to say, how do we, how do we address this? Because just saying you didn't follow the chain of command or communication, it's not an effective response to that. We have to find a better way to deal with this. Because people are not taking the shortest distance between what they need and
They want to talk to the manager.
I want to go back to Director Marvin's statement about communicating the initiative, the district initiatives. I'm wondering if we could commit to using the communication vehicle we have, which are, which are our board agendas, that if there is a term of art that needs a definition, that we put that in the board agenda materials? Sort of like in our policies, we have the definitions section. We either put it on simply in a glossary or, and maybe we introduce it as part of our agenda item. We don't have to read it through, but it's just sort of there for reference. That might help us to decide, these are the things that we have to make sure we're defining. I think we started doing it when there's an acronym. We've asked the people presenting to us to not use the acronyms or to explain it. So maybe to intentionally identify those terms or those concepts that we want to provide to the community one level deeper. Then we can draw from it, right? We could maybe put it all in one place or use it in a, in a, an outreach event. But that's something that we kind of think about as we're building our agendas.
So the deliverable would be the glossary?
Glossary of acronyms.
Eventually, yeah, a glossary of acronyms. But also when we're talking about agenda items, to all keep in mind, for example, when you're reviewing your agenda item and submitting your questions before Friday, if there's a term in there that you think would be, have an explicit definition or something in the agenda item, put that in your questions. And then that could be part of either what's provided.
Do we have the tech?
Does that make sense?
It does, with respect. I think this is just a staff problem and we need to not use jargon or acronyms. And I don't think board members do it very often. We need to not say MTSS without defining it and stuff like that.
If we have the capacity, like technological capacity to, like, Easter eggs on our, you know, like, so if somebody's saying, yeah, MTSS, boop, that means.
It's honestly one of the reasons I ran for the board, is that I could not, I could not, no, the, the acronyms. And I'd watch a board and I'm like, what are you talking about? It was all buzzwords.
I know MDE, MSBA.
Learn those, those terms?
They're in the, they're in the school board handbook. We have a lot of those in the school board handbook now, so. Well, so we could have, under improving board communication with stakeholders, board members will identify terms or concepts to be defined in agenda items or in a simply a board glossary.
And Ms. Kent said, is that something board members should do or is that something that we should just make sure that staff, that all of us get better at that when we're talking about things? Not use the acronym at least the first time and explain briefly what it is. I mean, I think just that's part of communication.
But it'd be great to have a, a glossary, too. Well, I'm being responsive to a conversation we've had so far, that there are things that we want the community to know more about, that we talk about, but we don't really, so how, how are we going to, rather than sit down and come up with a list, right? Of all the things that we think we need to better explain to the community? Or as it comes up, we can raise those, and we do have a structure for it because we've got our Q and A document.
Well, we have in the past, on our website, had frequently asked questions, why not frequently ask terms? Or frequently use terms around it?
Trying to do the acronym, or the acronym there.
I, I don't mean to try and help with this, but if you want to have a goal on this, it would seem to me that that's a, that's one manifestation of board members will seek to explain the work of the school district in the clearest, most accessible language possible for all of Rochester's diverse communities and to encourage and require staff to do the same. So like, using jargon, using acronyms is just one form of that. Like you, Dr. Garcia, had a great point a couple of meetings ago, which we haven't yet found the bandwidth to act on, but I heard it. You need a graphic, like, you know, for the referendum, like, you need a, like, excellent point. We don't have it yet, but we do. And so that was actually, like, very useful feedback, because, you know, the board agenda item on the referendum, which I got very positive feedback on in a community meeting yesterday, as being very, very detailed, but was way too complex for somebody to, like, understand. So it was enough for you all to vote on, but it's not what we need. So that's a, that's a manifestation of the board's commitment to explain complex things in accessible ways. So like, no jargon, no acronyms, use graphics, you know, have, I don't know.
I think you're kind of tying it, though, to like the thing that we were saying earlier is like, if we, if we as school board members individually cannot explain what we did in a meeting, then we're struggling. And so it's like, maybe that's really what the goal is, is do we, do we know what we're doing? And can we explain that to other people in a way that is accessible to them? And I feel like we are more appropriately positioned, I suppose, to do some of that work. Because we are, I mean, I know we have educators, but for the most part, we're like laypersons in the sense that, like, we're not educating anyone right now. You know, none of us are teachers, none of us are principals, none of us are the superintendent. So you all have a shared language that you just kind of bounce around and we need to be able to tell people who are not in the classroom what is going on.
Well, even, even getting past the acronym, you know, MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, you know, what is that? You know, what does that mean? And I think, I think Kent, you've been pretty good about actually filling in some of those gaps during the meeting. And it probably might feel tedious when you have to do it at every single meeting and, but, you know, people aren't going to know and become comfortable with, with it unless they have, you know, not dreams of what they are, but just sort of a snapshot.
Are we good with a, a part of the improving board communication with stakeholders, that the board will seek to explain the work of the school district in clear and accessible ways to the community and encourage staff to do so as well?
How is that measurable? How would we measure that we did that?
I would just amend that I also, I think, not to stop that question, I, I, at least, I'll tell you, I added something, Rochester's diverse communities. But yeah, to the same question.
And maybe it does come down to
Maybe that's something we have to figure out.
Yeah, maybe that is the list of things we want to clarify and to do that.
So maybe we make that something and then we assign it to
I could think of maybe we got a checkbox, like yes or no. It's the way I've been thinking about it as I've been sitting here is that maybe, in my sense, when we make big decisions, like referendum yes or no, when we're talking about it at the board table, and I think Director Barlow does a really good job of this and I always try to emulate that but can't think fast enough, is that to think about the whys before we vote. So he'll say his why and then, you know, I'm prepared to vote in favor of this initiative. That we just need to have more planful thoughts to be ready to do that. And, you know, following on Director Workman, we don't necessarily want to pre-make those decisions, but as we're sitting there, think about ways that we can explain ourselves better at the time of the vote.
So maybe that's the how, is that we're making a commitment as board members in our decision-making process to explain our work in these clear and accessible ways and to explain, to take the time to explain our votes.
And I think about it on the really big decisions. I don't think, you know, the routine stuff that we come, you know, comes up every year, I don't think it's necessary, but as much as the really big things.
Is this one you can give us a chance to wordsmith, maybe, and come back with it? That how is still, yes?
Not for this year because we don't have the capacity. But one thing I've been thinking about and haven't even had a chance to either mention to the chair or vice chair, as we've been looking at the, the surveys we did tied to the referendum, which were about, you know, financial issues, but also about the school district in general, it has occurred to me that what if we created an annual community survey about the district? And that could have a section on the board? And that we would have it, we'd also give it to like internal, like student pa, student parent, student parent caregiver staff. But then we'd also have a community piece. If it was a well-designed instrument, we could have things like, I understand what the Rochester school board does. I understand, I can understand the decisions. Board members are approachable and, like, we could have a board subset and then we could have, the district is headed in the right direction, something like that. The surveys that we did were about the referendum, but they did include interesting and, in many ways reassuring feedback on the district. And so I was thinking, if you did that, the board could be setting some of its goals tied to a measure like that, to your very good point on how you measure. And you might be looking and saying, oh, wait, we don't have enough people who know what we do. We want to increase awareness of the school board's work by at least five percentage points next year. And, you know, we'd have to develop a good instrument, but that could be
Could that be a goal for next year at this time?
Could be. We have definitely got a goal to develop the family survey because we lack it for the family or parent caregiver survey. And so it's definitely a next generation of the measurement work and the community engagement work, I think. And so this conversation kind of raises for me the idea of having a board component to that.
We haven't really talked, we, we talked a little bit about the, I mean, personally, I think the way that we structured, what we've talked about doing with the improving board communication with stakeholders also ties in some of the work we did before with the budget. Because we're, the budget may be one of the things that we're trying to clarify for the community as we talk about these things. But I'm, I'm wondering if there is a specific goal and some action steps related to the next steps of the strategic plan? And some of the big, we've talked a few times about the big decisions that we have before us. Is there a goal we want to set for ourselves, either on the process by which we're going to make those decisions or any of the, I mean, not any of the parameters around the decisions because we need to get the information first, but, I don't know, superintendent. And it also ties into the question about superintendent's goals, right? How can our goals support your goals being successful or the district's goals?
I think there, thank you, Chair Nathan. I think there's two big ones in the year ahead. And for you as a board to say, we are setting a goal for the year that we will make these decisions in an effective way, could be a very useful goal. I think you'd do it anyway, but a goal could be useful. And those two are changes to enhance the efficiency and effectiveness of our transportation system, number one, and changes to allocate our financial resources to advance, more effectively advance the goals of the strategic plan and meet the needs of all students. Funding redesign, transportation redesign. And for you to say, you know, we could wordsmith that we're going to make these decisions in the, in the long-term interest of the school district during the 2023, 2024 school year, is aligned with the strategic plan. It's implied in the strategic plan, but there's no goal you've set for yourself to say, yep, we're going to make those decisions this year on, you know, how we allocate our Title I resources. We spend no Title I federal funding for low-income students on middle and high school kids in Rochester. That's a deep discussion we need to have. It's all at the elementary level right now. I'll be bringing you some options in that area. And I could go through the different funding sources that, and that's a big one for us, you know, this year. know, this year, it's not entirely clear to me whether yet you make, obviously, I'll be talking to the chair and vice chair, whether you make that in one big decision, or we chunk it out. We look at Title One funding, we look at ELL funding, multilingual learning funding, as we're calling it, we look at general fund, I mean, we have to scope it, but that's all in the year ahead. So that's one that occurs to me.
And in terms of how, right, is that the board setting parameters for our decision-making process, maybe it could get down to the, we don't want to do it in two successive board meetings, for example, like, and, like, how would, how would we define, what was the word to choose, effectively?
I don't think you need to, with what we're seeing and how this board is working together. I think you're working effectively. I mean, if we're, if this was a board where we had to define what it means to be, make an effective decision, we could, but I think you are making effective decisions, and if we said, by June 1, 2024, this board will make, vote on strategic decisions regarding the effectiveness and efficiency of its transportation system and allocation of financial resources to meet the needs of the strategic plan, and advance learning of all students, like, we'd get to June 1, maybe July 1. And we would know if you did that. I mean, I'm fine with putting that, but I don't think there's a need to, I think, you know, we're not, we're not...
The date is our checkbox.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to provide no data to you on it, we're not going to do no community engagement, you're not going to have one meeting and be asked to vote on it. I mean, all of those things, I think, are of a piece with how we've been doing the work. But you're setting the goal of, we are going to make a decision this year.
So when you were talking about the allocation of resources and redesign, and specifically the Title One funding, really what you're talking about is equity, isn't it? I mean, at least in part, in terms of, are the resources getting to the students who really need them? And I think one of the things that we haven't talked about recently is, and I know that we're going to be starting to do more with the policy committee, is looking at each of our policies through that equity lens, and how is that going to be driving our work?
Certainly, the funding decision could be about equity, there are also other priorities that I could see this board setting. For that, that will be very important for you to be...
But I just don't want us to lose sight of that equity piece, I mean, we've got an equity policy, we've got our welcoming statement and expectations, we've got all of that set, so now I think we need to make sure that we are, we're keeping it in the forefront of, at least of how we're thinking, and how do we apply that to decisions that we're making? You know, who benefits from this policy, who is disadvantaged by this policy, what assumptions are we making, whose voices are we missing? I mean, those are all good things to keep in mind.
And preview, we're having a discussion on that at the September 22 board meeting, so we can launch from there, yes?
So I think in terms of having the redesign of all of these things as a, as board goals, as a board goal, I think it's a good idea, clearly, we would do it anyway, but, I mean, we're doing a whole lot of things anyway, that we don't have as goals, but here, it's reminding us and signaling to the community, these are two big deals, and they're going to affect a whole lot of different areas, and including many areas of the strategic plan. So I think it's a good, it's a good message.
Any other feedback on that? I think I've got to wordsmith this one, too, but I think I've got the general gist. Yes. Right, any other areas of goals that we haven't covered, or really burning to add?
I just want to go back to the staff thing, and I've been rolling that around in my head, and I don't know if there's any good way that we as a board can do that, but I just, I think it's really important that staff know how, and are reminded that we appreciate how critically they are, important they are to our kids, and how important it is to be, continue to be involved in an educational system. And I don't, I don't know what, how we put that into action, and we could show up at their board meetings, or their staff meetings and listen, but I don't know if that's particularly effective. And maybe there's something, that may be part of the allocation of funds, the redesign, but it's never been more important that we have the best people we can find to come into education, to stay there, and to continue, that we continue to support them.
I go back to thinking about the governor's role, and sort of the two pieces, the work at the board table, and then how, what kind of community outreach, right, we could do explicitly to staff. I mean, we've talked about the community outreach, and I know we have formal ways to do it through meet and confer, but that's only some of the staff representatives, we have a number of different staff groups that you meet with regularly. But, I mean, and in the past, we've had sort of some staff listening sessions at Hock, not recently, but where we've had groups of staff who said, we want to talk to you. And it's, I think it was good for both sides, it wasn't specific to a decision, it was just a good, a good way to hear. So that might be an opportunity to reserve some listening sessions specifically for staff, maybe around a big decision. But then I think about, what are we putting on our agenda explicitly where we, we try to elevate topics on our agenda to give it visibility to the community, not just because we have a decision to make about it, but because we want to highlight or showcase. We used to have the above and beyond process where people could nominate outstanding staff, and then the names would all be recognized, and I think it was Rochester Public School Foundation would donate a gift card, that, we don't have that kind of system right now. I mean, that might seem like token, but I'm just trying to think of ways, when we're here in a public forum, what are we doing to elevate staff issues and elevate, as you said, Jean, the value of our staff? Is that what you're thinking?
That, and just, sort of elevate the profession to where it should be in terms of the respect that we, that we give our educators, and that we encourage the rest of the community to demonstrate them to, to our team.
Well, but you are going to receive a comprehensive plan to improve recruitment and retention, or I wish I had called that invested human capital. So just like last year, you reviewed and received the DISC plans for deeper learning, post-secondary education, all those, that is the work of this year, and it's also one of the goals you've set for me. And so I think the best thing you could do for our staff is dramatically strengthen recruitment, retention, job satisfaction comprehensively, recognition will be a piece of that, actually, in fact. And so you will absolutely be getting this year. I didn't suggest that for the last goal, because I'm not yet sure what the board decision is in that, there may be one, but there definitely is board leadership of that, for sure.
So maybe, and maybe this is too vague, just to support the district's plan to recruit, retain, support quality staff. And that could include down the line, doing little things like continuing to do above and beyond, or sending thank you notes, or having once a month, yay staff moments, but I just think we have enough staff that are feeling, it's been a really tough few years, and for them to know that we acknowledge them and understand that, and really, really value who they are and what they're doing.
Is it something similar to the previous suggested goal about the big decisions? Can we commit by a date that the board will, I mean, are there certain decisions that you know will approve, staff development plan will, right, are there things, or is that still in flux?
I mean, it'll all be this year, I couldn't give you a specific date, because that's got to be, we've got to do a lot of stakeholder input and analysis on that one, we have to really dive deep into our retention data, into our recruitment data, we don't do exit interviews like we need to do, there's a whole array, but this is like, this is, this is the big work of the year ahead, and so one of the, this, and so I...
Can we reference it then during this school year? Can that be the...
Absolutely, I mean, we wanted to say, review and approve a comprehensive human capital strategy for Rochester Public Schools that addresses, you know, recruitment, retention, job satisfaction, and other, you know, issues of importance to employees' capacity to serve kids, you certainly, you know, you certainly could put that in there, it's definitely, it's already in my goals that you've approved for the year, along with youth voice and leadership, and so it's definitely serious. So I understand the goal of calling it out, at the same time, it's, it's there, it's explicit, it's going to happen for sure.
And I always get back to, so then what would, like, what is our goal in that, except to do our work? Right, Director Workman?
One of the things I was remembering from when I taught, which is now a long time ago, is that I always appreciated was that, I don't know, once, a couple of times a year at least, there was, there were a couple of school board members who were actually in the building, we would know about it ahead of time, and, you know, they're going to be available in this location at this time, if you want, you know, just stop in and say hi, or whatever. And I think we've missed that a lot, well, certainly during COVID, we lost a lot of that, but I think that might go to help us be able to express to the staff, you know, we really appreciate what we're doing, or, you know, if there's something really cool that's happening in the building, you know, the principals, if we know that's going to happen, we can say, okay, we'll make sure a couple of us are available there to listen and congratulate, and, you know, whatever else, as opposed to, you know, inviting us in.
So why don't we say that we're supporting staff by establishing a plan for board members to visit all school buildings and programs by July, well, by the end of the school year? So we'll have to work with you to find out, I mean, my understanding is that surprise is not a good thing, so it would be good to schedule the dates, and then, of course, make sure it's dates and times that everybody can do, to make sure it's not more than necessarily three of us at a time.
I mean, a number of you have just always copied me when you're going out to visit a school, and it's perfect, it just lets me know, you know, it's there, and I, I think you can't do enough of it, it's fantastic, if it's your schedule.
No, and we get, I mean, we get open invitations, like, oh, please come visit us anytime, well, I mean, what does that mean, anytime, and...
But we also get invitations by proactive individuals, and then they end up getting seven of us, or four of us, and then there's other buildings who are like, oh, I didn't, oh, I didn't know I could ask you to come, right? So maybe that's part of it, is that we also have a communicate, we develop a communication to maybe to building principals and say, here's what we're planning to do, we'd all love to come, how does that work?
Maybe the model is that, when we went to think, the technology staff, I mean, obviously that was specific and intentional, but I thought that was a great model, that we knew in advance, you know, there was a plan for it, and that we were there for a specific reason, and I felt like they really appreciated us being there in that form.
And, right, and the buildings might think it is good for us to be there for a specific reason on a specific day, as opposed to Tuesday.
How about if the school board writes a letter to building principals, or building principals and significant others, just saying, if there's an event at your building where you would like a board member to show up, please let us know. And, you know, sometimes things happen, a teacher will get an award, or something, you know, that's...
Those surprise awards are really fun.
This week, and they're going to do something, and just...
But we also want to encourage each other to just make those, it's our average day visit.
Absolutely, yeah.
So maybe that's our goal, is to improve board connection with staff. And the one way is to write the letter, right? And the second way is to, do we need to do a communication about board members visiting?
I really think, what has happened, I know, you know, each of you, I haven't seen a single, like, I see a Director Cook out, but I know there are two people recently who I have to see most things, it's very authentic when you just say, hey, I'm interested in this thing, I want to come out, and it doesn't seem like another thing that the school has to do. So I think those are very welcome, and they're very, like, authentic.
If we know what those things are.
Well, but actually, I think a lot of times, you've just said, I want to go to Willow Creek, or I want to go talk about literacy, and you just do it, I mean, I think...
I did it for the SROs, I mean, I wanted, I wanted to see what they do.
That's right, exactly, another example, and that was great, people really, and so I, sending a letter is good, what I know is we have certain principals who will say, oh, now I have to create an event for the board members. Jared Grayler, God love him. But, and that's great, but it's a little different than, I want to see the SRO issues on the ground, or I want to see literacy on the ground, right? I mean, you're the governing board of this district, I have complete confidence in this board right now, which is not, every superintendent can say that, that you are not going to be in buildings telling principals what to do, you know?
We've been there.
Right, so were that the case, we would be having a very different discussion, you may come back troubled by something, or energized by something, but that's good.
So we could just say, board members commit to making visits to buildings throughout the school year?
It seems to be the simplest way to do it would be to set, like, a personal goal for each of you for a number of visits, or a frequency of visits, I don't know that you have to say it off the top of your head, and then that's a self-monitoring thing, and then by June, you can say, you know, I actually made five of my planned eight visits, or something like that, over the course of the year.
I wonder if we ought, like, would make the, like, yes, we're going to visit all sites and programs, and then we could, I mean, we could certainly divvy up to make sure that everyone gets seen, and then if we want to go in excess of, like, my 12 that I'm going to go see, or whatever, that...
So we could, yeah, we can commit to establishing some sort of central communication, just like we do for the videos, right, where we can all share, here's all the schools, it's kind of like that back-to-school chart that somebody made one year, where they told us all the back, all the first day of school things, and they had the chart and said where cabinet was going, and they said, board members, here's where you can go, we tried to...
It was the first year after pandemic.
Yeah, yeah, we can do the same kind of thing, is that we'll just commit to putting that together, putting it out there for board members, and then we can use it to kind of track our visits, and then you'll know, oh, like, six people have been to Dakota, I'm going to give Willow Creek some love, right?
Having a shared table that we could, you know, each, it's sort of a passive way to communicate amongst ourselves about which sites we've visited. But for me, those site visits have been really valuable, but I think largely it's because they're kind of ad hoc, and they're not, not going to be part of a presentation or an event, just to, you know...
I want to go read to some kindergartners and see what lunch looks like.
Right, so I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't, I don't think I'd get the same value from a visit of the full board, where they're...
I think, like, I think you're, this is certainly, especially once we get the perceptionist position filled again, and Lori wants to get us doing some double duty, but once we get that taken care of, this is certainly in the assistant board clerk's role to coordinate this for you, and so it's a great idea to do the kind of spreadsheet approach, and we can take a look at it, so we can make sure everybody's...
It allows it to be more intentional.
Yeah, yeah, we can absolutely do that.
I know, we've had this discussion before, too, is that just knowing what is happening in a building, and I know it's hard, you know, how do you coordinate all of that, we don't have a central, a really, a central calendar, but I'll hear about something that somebody else attended it, was, gosh, did I miss that, how did, you know, why didn't I know that, sometimes it's my own fault, but, you know, just knowing what's going on.
All right, so it sounds like we have board communication with stakeholder goal, we have a strategic plan-related goal, and we have a connection with staff goal. Genius. Everybody good?
Can I ask a question? Our strategic plan goal, does it include something about the budget? I don't want to drop budget out.
It's certainly related, because it's the funding redesign, so it's about the money, it's not, you're right, it doesn't directly include...
I guess my thought as I'm sitting here is that, you know, referendum or not, do we need some sort of goal related to what happens after? That's about as far as my head, yeah, pardon.
Is that, is that a given?
Do you mean kind of like committing to a balanced budget?
Some, right. Some, right, whatever happens after.
Oh, after the referendum?
Right. Passed or not passed, what?
Yeah, and for next year-
Do we need, do we need a goal related to that?
Yeah. I mean, I think we already committed to it because when we voted for the referendum, the superintendent informed us that he would be waiting to give the recommendation until after we saw what happened. So we already have a commitment to, because what we could have said to the superintendent is, nope, we want to vote on the operating referendum before we have the referendum in the fall. We kind of agreed to that process.
Well, as you know, one of my goals for last year was end the year with a balanced budget. And we didn't put it in my goal for this year, I think, because I presume that's a goal. You could make that a board goal for the year to say, end the year with a balanced budget and appropriate level of reserve for the long-term financial health of the district under unforeseen circumstances. That was my goal for last year and you could make it a board goal.
Could that be part of the strategic plan goal because-
That's what I'm thinking, yeah. It fits under there.
Because it-
It's pretty different in the sense that you could vote to reallocate Title I and not have a balanced budget.
But, I mean, we're kind of obligated to have a balanced budget by the state of Minnesota anyway.
No, school districts go into statutory operating debt. I mean, the utility, the utility for Rochester of having those goals has been, we have had a deficit to face and there are districts in the state that are not facing their deficits, especially as there has been the COVID funding to mask them. And so you, you set a goal for me that said, you can't do that. You can't, you can't make no progress.
So are we saying that the budget we approve for the 2024, 25 year will be a balanced budget? Because we already have the-
That would be a June decision.
Well-
That would be a June decision.
You could do it either way. You could say the current, because you remember, we always have budget revisions. We have changes in enrollment, we have things like that. You could say we will end the year with a 23, 24 budget is balanced, or you could say we will pass a balanced budget. They're obviously related and you could do either. The more forward-looking one would be, we will approve in June a balanced budget with appropriate reserves for the long-term financial health of the district for the 24, 25 school year.
And that would, that would be a recommitment to the last year of the three-year plan-
Yep.
-that superintendent's presented. So the board will pass, two options, the board will pass a balanced budget with appropriate reserves for the 2024, 25 year, or we will end 2023, 24 year with a balanced budget.
The reason the former is better with a board governance lens is it's really my job now to bring in the budget that you've already directed to be balanced. So if that doesn't happen, you say, whoa, Kent, we didn't end with a balanced budget. So the next board decision really is to approve a balanced budget for the next year. Because that would be the, you don't really vote to receive a budget result. You get the report.
Right, right.
Whereas you do vote for the next budget.
And anything we'd be voting on over this next year would be to spend the budget we already agreed to.
Or revise it, which you will vote on. And you'll vote on budget revisions, it would be a board goal, but you'll vote on, you will vote on some budget revisions October.
I, I personally am in favor of the forward thinking and talking about passing the 2024, 25 budget. Because that will take into account the referendum decision and frankly, how hard we work as board members to share the information with the community and whatever decision is made about the operating referendum renewal and then the actual budget.
Well, and if we went on a spending spree this winter and spring and just took our eyes off the ball, we couldn't present you with a budget that is likely to be balanced that, well, that is on paper balanced in June because we would have ballooned the deficit. We already have to replace the last wave of COVID dollars and that is going to be a challenge.
Yeah, I, I like it as well. I think it fits with the, the goals that we had outlined about the, making timely decisions about the transportation system and funding redesign because it's a, it, all of those things will feed into it and set the, set the framework for what a balanced 24, 25 budget would look like. But I think it's a useful focusing.
One of the reasons I bring it up is that we're asking the community, a big ask of the community this fall, we need to carry through with that moving forward.
Any other thoughts on that? Any other areas? So we'll, I think we'll, as we did last year, is it all right if the board asks the exec committee superintendent to kind of refine these? Probably won't be able to do that until our exec meeting on Monday. So you'll get whatever these look like close to the board meeting on Tuesday. However, we do have a board retreat on Saturday where we'll be talking about our strengths. So I think between Lori's notes and my notes, I might try to have a, a better draft by Saturday because we might want to refer to these in terms of the way our strengths might support or maybe even get in the way of us accomplishing some of these goals. What else, anything else about Saturday?
No, I mean, we're going to be working with consultants, done work with city council and others. I think it's going to be a very aggressively, in a good way, facilitated discussion. So all of us should come ready to talk about our five identified strengths and talk about how we can support each other in, in leveraging those on behalf of the district. And if you didn't get Lori any information on any musquals, dietary preferences, please do. So, because literally it's just going to be me, I'm going to go open the door and I'm going to bring something in. So it's not like, but I think, no.
All right. So if there's nothing else on that, we have our ABCD. Any items board member would like to bring forward for consideration on the future agenda?
I have one.
Yes?
Which is whether or not we should have an annual review of our school board book. I don't know if that's on the calendar anywhere since we just-
I think it is. I think it's in policy.
For January.
Yeah. But I'll make sure it's on the ABCD for January. Because we're creating that for next year. Anything else? So we have, I should look and see if there's any else. Sorry. Upcoming dates are the 12th, our school board retreat, which is Saturday from 8 to 2. August 15th, 5:30, a regular meeting. September 5th, 5:30, a regular meeting. And September 12th, 5 o'clock, a study session. And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 7:40 PM.